For, yeah, we got twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, general government sixteen thousand. Are you following me? Is everybody following me on page sixty-one? So, yes, Mayor, we did get it. We didn't spend those because that's what, this money is going in our investment accounts. And if you look on the sheet that comes on your monthlies, you will see the balances in those investment accounts, and those things have grown.
Okay, so it was, what it would show is there was five hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So where does that show up on this spreadsheet?
It's not gonna, it's, it, that, this, this is a, uh, this compilation doesn't mean that it was spent. This, this, um...
Well, it's just the general fund is the spreadsheet, is that?
Right, and these are revenues. So what I'm saying is to cross-reference where this money's sitting is in the investment accounts. You haven't spent it. There's nothing to spend it on, so that's... Does that, does that make sense to everybody? It's, it's...
The one million six hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-two, on the, on page sixty-one, under transportation fees, it has nothing in there for twenty-twenty-two. So, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, page fifteen of the spreadsheet that they, uh, provided us with today, the big one, there's the impact fee fund one oh seven that is referencing page sixty-one. And I think that that became a new line item, and if we were to fill in those blanks with those gaps when you're looking at the five-year, yeah, we would put six hundred thousand probably twice.
Yes, because it's not being used...
And then that would affect the average.
Yep.
And would probably bring it up. So we are realizing that revenue whenever the county pays.
Right. And at this point, the only thing we're spending this year is the one-point-two-million of projects. Everything else is sitting in the investment account, just accruing interest.
Okay.
One other question, and I know you all talked about this at the last meeting, and I was trying to follow it. My question is about the local option gas tax, how that went down. And then if you look down further on this spreadsheet, it has municipal gas tax.
Mm-hmm.
Why is there two? And how did the, I mean, I understand that they take a general calculation or whatever, but have they seen the gas lines and round here with the cruise ships and seven, ten-thousand people here on the weekend?
Yeah, I know, it's based, but it's based on computations that are specific from the state and from the consumption of gas, and based on the gas prices. And, um, yeah, sometimes it's hard to figure if the price of gas goes up, why doesn't the entitlement go up? It's, it's a little bit tricky. You know, the state used to print a, a book when I got here in two thousand twelve and thirteen, and you could look in that book, and it would tell you how all this stuff was computed. And then it's interesting that the state doesn't provide that book every year. I, I can't remember the last time the state did that, which would be more clear, because council could look at it and say, well, this is how the local option gas tax works. But, um, that's not readily available. So what happens is sometimes we get these, uh, reports from the state, and it'll say all the cities are, uh, loaded, and it'll say Cape Canaveral estimate that two hundred and sixty-one thousand, you know, whatever. But you gotta really look behind that to see how they're computing that. So that's not real straightforward, and it could be confusing, but the fluctuation of gas prices definitely and surely would, um, you know, affect what the rate is overall.
Right. And the difference between the local and the municipal, local option gas and municipal gas tax?
One's based...
Why is there two?
One's based on a sales tax, and the other one, the municipal gas tax, I believe, and I might have them inverted, that might be based on consumption. So there's two different things going on there.
Well, I think that brings up the point that there's an increase in the municipal gas tax, but there's a big decrease in the local option gas tax. So, I mean, that might be the way it works if they're based on two different...
Mm-hmm. Oh, they're based on different criteria.
It is a big drop, and I think, I hope that that's not true. And there's a chance that, I mean, these are predictions, uh, that that local option gas tax, which has steady been over three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, will not fall a hundred thousand dollars, um, decrease. And I think we're seeing an increase in the municipal gas tax, so maybe that...
And is the municipal gas tax for, uh, tax on gas services to people's homes? And local option gas tax for sales tax on the purchase of gas? Is that what we're looking at, John?
It, it's motor fuel sales, and it's a local tax imposed by the county on municipal.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's all I have for right now. I just wanted to get that straight in my head. Thank you.
So does that, I have one question on that as you answer that, city manager. So if both of these are local, are related to petroleum, let's say, do we have a tax on gas? Because we do have a franchise fee for, or a franchise agreement for a gas provider. Do we charge a tax for that?
I don't believe so, but I would look into that and get back to you. So your question specifically is do we charge an additional tax on top of the, the county-imposed fuel tax?
Well, if the, that's what I'm trying to determine, is the county, um, fuel tax on petroleum or natural gas that's provided to a home that has gas in it?
No, it's, it's for motor vehicles.
Okay. So if we don't have that, um, if, if it's not to people's homes for person, you know, residential use, let's say, um, we do have a, a franchise agreement on gas services for our city, so is there a tax on that gas coming to the city?
Like we have on our electric?
On electric, on communications as far as phone business, on cell phone service, on all those, the taxes are built in. So if we don't have a tax on that gas, then we're missing an opportunity there.
Bottled gas utility tax?
I'm sorry?
Would that be bottled gas?
Bottle, bottle, are you speaking of bottled gas?
No, gas to the home provided...
Anytime anybody loads their tank, we get a question on that.
Natural gas to the home.
Natural gas...
Like a gas...
To the home.
Yeah, like you have a gas stove?
Yeah, yeah, um...
Or gas dryer?
You know what? Uh, a lot of this is tangled in, uh, to each other. Um, we'll take a note, take a note down, and we'll, 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 we'll take a look at that. I don't think so.
But...
But we have Florida, or the gas, yeah.
And here's the reason that I asked, Mayor, as you're saying that. Almost every hot tub in this city that is in a condo complex has gas.
That could be the municipal gas tax.
And they pay for that gas.
Yeah.
So, well, if, if city manager's correct, saying that's for petroleum services, like I go fill up a car, and the municipal gas tax is that, as well as a local tax on that, which could be, what I would like to know is, do we have a tax on municipal gas service that we have a franchise fee to...
Or, or hotels, or these big industrial users might be using gas.
Yeah, because they have gas stoves and everything.
I think those, those nicer kitchens, like you see Lady, Lady Bird and the Hyatt, they're gonna have the Hyatt kitchen.
Local option gas.
So that, if we're not, if we don't have a tax on that, we're missing that opportunity because we're providing the service for it.
Yeah, well, we could, we could validate that, but there's, I mean, there's multiple. You have your local option gas tax, you have your municipal, and then you have your local half-send sales tax. So, um, let us look into that, and then we'll be able to, to definitely, uh, find out that we're receiving something for that. I can't believe we don't get anything for that either. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit miffed.
The bottled gas tax, though, is a state imposed on LPG liquefied petroleum, right? That's your propane. That is what that is. Are you suggesting a city-imposed tax on top of that?
No, I'm, I'm proposing that the city impose attack, or propose, put a tax on ga, nat, liquid gas delivered to those restaurants?
Yeah.
The hotels that have gas stoves? Um, anyone that had, that's a commercial property that has a ga, a gas heated hot tub or pool?
Isn't that propane or LPG?
Not all of them.
Okay.
So it's with the franchise agreement of our gas vendor, like FPL, the franchise fee?
Absolutely. And that gas vendor is, we just redid their contract when I first got on, and so it's, it's due to be renewed in like twenty-twenty-six. But everywhere that I've lived had a tax for the natural gas service.
Okay.
To your home or to your business or residence, if you were, if you had gas appliances.
And, John, you know, when, if you go to Cocoa or wherever and get gas, which is fifty cents cheaper than it is on the beach, um, there's a sticker on the gas tanks that say City of Cocoa tax. We don't have that here. Is there another tax that there, the city itself is putting on? I mean, as far as looking for revenue, these are places that we might want to find out about.
Aside from the three sources that we're looking at here, I don't know of any, but I'll get, I'll get a definition, um, based on what council member, um, Jackson, I have to look at the name sometimes because I, you know, I got a lot on my mind. But anyway, um, council member Jackson asked, and we'll see if, um, we'll see where that, where that is.
And I just asked AI?
Chesapeake Utilities.
Yeah, it is Chesapeake.
Thank you, Chesapeake.
The Chesapeake, we do have a Chesapeake, well, Chesapeake is...
Yeah.
Natural gas.
We do get Chesapeake, no, Chesapeake's a revenue, yeah.
A municipal gas tax is a charge imposed by local governments on gasoline purchases. So that's gas, gasoline purchases.
Pulling up at the pump.
Yeah.
Municipal is the Cumberlands, the Chevrons, the race track?
And the local gas tax varies, uh, by state and locality. In Brevard County, the current gas tax is six cents per gallon. And let's see. It just tells how it impacts the consumer there. So it'd definitely be worth looking at that, what is that local gas tax? Because it is definitely at the pump, so it looks like we don't have a gas tax for our, uh, liquid natural gas service through Chesapeake.
Councilmember Willis, what were you gonna say about Chesapeake? Because they changed, it gets a little confusing because it wasn't always Chesapeake. They changed the name a few years back, and...
They were acquired.
Chesapeake Utilities.
Franchise.
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 Yeah.
Chesapeake Utilities is gas.
Is gas, okay. So that may be where the answer is, so...
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's...
Yeah.
Where the natural gas is being collected.
Right. And we, that, when I got on, it's when they changed, because that was one of the first things I voted on with you guys, was that change of, uh, franchise from Florida City Gas to Chesapeake.
You know, the municipal gas, too, is it refers, it says, "Natural gas supplied and distributed by a utility system that's owned and operated by a municipality," as opposed to a private investor-owned company. These public gas systems serve residential, commercial, and industrial customers within their local communities, often acting, oh, that's, often acting as a nonprofit entity accountable to citizens.
Like a marina, you see sometimes, but, so... Okay, well, I think I am fully aligned with the revenue. Are there any other comments on that?
Well, just back to the municipal gas tax, wouldn't it be up to this council to impose that? If you wanted to have a tax on gas sales within the city, that would be up to this body, would it not?
I, the, the, the Florida law regulates taxation, so the city can only impose taxes that the Florida legislature says the city can impose. And under one sixty-six, the legislature gives the city the authority to impose certain types of ca, uh, taxes on like electricity, metered or bottled gas, natural or liquefied petroleum, or manufactured, water service, fuel oil, and of course, telecommunications services. So the city has enacted a public service tax under section seventy point twenty-six of the code, so the city's already doing that. Where that money ends up in your budget, I have no earthly idea, um, but it seems to be, uh, the, the city code appears to be consistent with, um, the provision under the Home Rule Section under one sixty-six of the Florida statutes about the limitations of taxes. So that's all in there. There appears to be a fuel tax not to exceed, which is four cents per gallon for fuel oil, whatever that fuel oil, um, is, and that seems to be consistent with the Florida statute that max, says the maximum fuel oil tax is four cents per gallon. So you may want to look into it, that the city's probably already doing it. Where it goes in your budget, again, I have no earthly idea.
I'll, I'll look at all of them and get to find them, what can you do to make sure we... Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you to everyone, and city attorney as well. If, if we're utilizing it under state law, if there's room to increase, I think you've heard a willingness to consider that. And, uh, yeah, our city attorney's guidance on anything we're not doing, maybe that state law would allow, could open up new revenue streams.
Yeah, absolutely.
And definitely need to make sure that it's on par with any other taxes for services like electricity and communications tax. If it has, make sure that the increases that we've seen there, you know, that it's barely in line, because we may not have looked at that in a while.
It's excellent. Okay, we're working through it. We're at four fifteen PM. Uh, our CRA meeting is at five thirty PM. Uh, if everyone's, I think we focused on some of the, the revenue. If we could jump to some of the yellow highlighted costs, uh, the first one on page three, legislative cuts, let's see, uh, twenty thousand six hundred eighty dollars. I think that the proposed amount originally was eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand six hundred ninety. The average was fifty thousand. And so we, you know, the, I proposed sixty thousand, which is over the average, ten thousand over, and it, when I'm reading, I guess that's the total, oh, I see. So the city staff, I think, went and looked at this. They saw the elections and highlighted it at twenty thousand six hundred eighty, and stated there will be no election, so this was able to be taken out. So if I'm reading this correctly, um, this would be an example of twenty thousand dollars that our city staff has looked at for that specific line item and said, we could reduce this by twenty thousand six eighty?
Right. And as we go through these, Mayor, I, I don't know, because maybe you don't want to have to go back, but if council, when council's talking about this, it's, because we're gonna have to adjust this budget completely once we know what all the cuts are. So if at this time, when, if council, you know, agrees, you could be telling us as we go along that you're okay with us taking out the twenty-six eighty, so, because there's no election. We need to know that because tomorrow we will go in and adjust this budget, what, whether there's a hundred and fifty thousand of cuts, or a hundred thousand, or whatever it is, uh, but we need to know that going along, because we're not gonna have time to be going back saying, well, did you really want to take that out? So I think we need that guidance in this workshop.
So in that one, there was, um, yes, I think, if there's no election, I think that striking that down would be good, and whether or not what we do with that, if we take it out of the budget, if we move it, I think, but we would naturally think that that's not needed there.
So for the sake of efficiency during this meeting, if we can just get a majority consensus, approve, cut that, we'll list it, and we'll be able to modify the budget after this stays over. Yep? So is there consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, council, the twenty thousand six hundred eighty dollars, any opposed? No, I hear consensus. So, uh, just above it there, I think the other side of that is, this is one that city agreed could be removed. But the other ones, like, uh, travel and per diem and equipment maintenance and office supplies, when I looked at the averages, uh, we averaged fifty-three hundred in travel per diem, now it's fourteen thousand. We averaged ten thousand in equipment maintenance. Oh, that actually reduced twenty-five hundred. Okay. I, I think that's five hundred, that's insignificant. And then, yeah, the, the travel and per diem, it's, there's no desire to, staff is not recommending to reduce that.
That's correct, uh, Mayor and council. Travel and per diem is directly in conjunction with training opportunities, and we value training very highly here. It's what evolves our employees in their fields, and we just really don't want to cut any training in travel that, and per diem affiliated with that, unless council really would like to direct that.
Got it. And I think this is a lot of R. This is legislative. This is Florida League of Cities.
Oh, that's for legislative?
Yeah. And so, uh, let's, uh, we're talking about, we got twenty thousand, I think we've all agreed on, and I wanted to jump back to those green highlighted as well. Let's go to the next one that city staff, if we, if we could go to page five, building cuts, am I seeing, I think seventeen hundred, uh, which... Where does, where would the seventeen hundred come from? The, the memberships in training? Proposed was ninety-five hundred.
So we came up.
Yeah, I did not even recommend really anything. I, I think I said a thousand dollars by cutting office supplies by five hundred and motor fuel and lubricants by five hundred. Is, are there any recommended cuts here from city staff?
I mean, that's what that department, uh, came with, up with, you know, that they felt like if they were gonna cut something, that could be cut.
That's okay.
It's not something we want to really...
It's small, I, and I didn't think so. I mean, unless council, I want to just go to the next yellow. Let's go to page six.
All right.
And actually, they total up page six on page seven, so I'm seeing in the infrastructure maintenance budgeted expenditures, there was, uh, proposed three million two hundred sixty-one thousand. The average has been a million, so it was one point, or two-point-two million more in infrastructure maintenance this year than the five-year average. So I, I went through and found three-point-two, basically a hundred twenty-two thousand there, that green, that was totaled up. And those items are all, I think, noted in here, and if I understand this, the department went in and said, yes, we can do it, but largely, uh, if expenditures exceed the budget, it will require transfer to contingency, and as our city manager, I think, has explained. And so with these, I, when I looked at what's being done, I, I think we are taking a budget that's averaged a million dollars, and we're saying, hey, here's three-point-one million. So there's not a reduction in the budget. It, it was requested to have three-point-two million. And so I think if we can find, get comfortable with the hundred twenty-two thou, or the hundred nine thousand, it looks like there was a few that they did not highlight in yellow and made comments on. I'm fine, I think, with that. The risk of contingency, the one comment I'll say on that is, we don't want to do, I think, the projects, even if they're easy wins, I think the higher priority projects first, so that if we get down to the end of the road and one of them's over budget, I'd rather not get a smaller, lower priority project done and use the funds so that they don't have to borrow from contingency. But, uh, that might be easier said than done. Counsel, what do we think about the, uh, page six and seven, those IM totaling a hundred nine thousand two hundred fifty?
I would be good with that. Any, anything that we can do to not touch contingency.
Okay.
My preference.
I'm, I'm a little confused on the, the message here. What is it you're recommending?
So the total IM cuts, uh, in yellow on page seven says a hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty.
Correct.
I had originally put a hundred twenty-two thousand, but they made statements, and obviously, having the knowledge of the department, the city, I did not recommend them. I think councilmember Willis, the first to chime in, said he's okay with the, cutting the hundred nine thousand two hundred fifty out of the three-point-three million two hundred sixty-one thousand. The total budget will be three million one hundred thirty-nine thousand, which is two-point-two million higher than the average, but we are getting consensus on a hundred nine thousand two hundred fifty.
Thank you.
Now, if we want to specify those, uh, you know, as highlighted, uh, it's the building grounds maintenance, I'm sorry, overtime is the first one, three thousand one hundred eleven dollars up at the top. I'll let the, um, the reason why is it's averaged nine hundred seventy-eight dollars in overtime, and this year we had fifty-one hundred. But there might have been some, some good reasons for that, maybe, uh, it's expected. I hope we don't have to have, we've done a great job, from what I can see, managing overtime, but the budget would be two thousand dollars instead of forty-one hundred, which is double than what we've averaged. Not a lot of money, but, well, it's thirty-one hundred. Then the thirty-three thousand on building grounds and maintenance, uh, obviously, we can see it's a hundred eighteen thousand. We're suggesting eighty-five thousand, so that would be thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. City staffs provided the, the same response here. We'll implement the recommendation if expenditures exceed budget, will require transfer from contingency. And going down, equipment maintenance, eighty-nine thirty-nine, office supplies, one thousand forty-seven, and every single one of these are higher budgets increases from the average. So we're not reducing, I know I've said that a few times, we're just, uh, taking it down to not be as high of an increase. Uh, the street sidewalks, mobility, traffic light repair, we've got, I think, good budgets there, streetlights, we've averaged twelve thousand dollars. The request was seventy-one thousand, we're giving fifty thousand, which is five times the amount of money we've averaged. The street signs, forty-one hundred is what we've averaged. We got ten thousand dollars as opposed to the forty-four, uh, thousand dollars. So that's a significant thirty-four thousand dollar reduction. You add all that up, you end up with a hundred nine thousand. And the motor fuel and lubricants and small tools, it looks like, um, city staff does not recommend to cut those, kind of in the middle there. And I'll let, any comments if we're interpreting it?
No, that's, no, that's, that's good, and the way I understand it is, you'd be recommending the hundred and nine thousand, uh, the specific cuts that we identified. So if we need consensus on that, and then...
And I think it's better to do the department in a batch.
Right.
Instead, not read every line item, but as highlighted and noted.
Okay.
City manager, I know you had, may, I was not being clear, is that...
Oh, oh, it does. It, it just, you know, staff is recommending those cuts, but it comes with that condition of those highlighted in red and those specific line items.
Yeah, I think we have to work really hard to not go over budget. And if a surprise comes, uh, I think the best way to handle it is, you know, consist, consistent communication and give the council a chance to maybe get in front of it and transfer outside of departments, if that's recommended by our finance, and our city manager thinks it's a good idea, but, um... But. Councilmember Jackson?
No, I'm agreeing with you. And, you know, like, I'm thinking of the street signs and looking at that budget. And I do see where we've cut. That is, that is good. But still, some of them are really high, big increases. So, you know, once again, I'm wondering, you know, because we talked about maybe putting an inflationary increase on the majority of them and use that as a calculation. So I'm not sure on some of them, you know, why they need to go up that much. But I do agree with you on.
Well, if we take the 109,250, which it sounds like you're okay with that, you're questioning potentially others, plus the 20,680. I think we can come back to this if we need to.
Mayor, June Clark is here. If you want any perspective on any of those items, you know, you're talking street signs. You know, what's the rationale behind the amount for that particular item? There was a comment about sidewalks in a previous meeting. You know, just reminding you that she's here if you, or, and all the department heads are here, if you'd like to seek their input.
Thank you very much. I think it would be best that we jump to the next big department and come back to IM and take advantage of that. For the sake of time, I'd rather kind of, instead of digging too deep in one department, we've got our city staff saying here, here's 102, but comes with some risk. And Councilmember Jackson's, if we want to circle back, we can. But do I have any opposition or consensus on the 109,250?
Yes, consensus.
Consensus, as hearing known. So I think that'd be the second number. We finished legislative. We've agreed to not touch building departments. We've accepted the infrastructure maintenance. And now I think we need to go to page.
Eight.
Well, yeah, I see page nine. And it looks like the, there's, IT does not recommend any cuts. So on, if I, if I'm reading that correctly, on page 10 begins the. Parka, Parks, Recreation, Community Affairs. The first one. The 14,000 for professional services. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the total on page 11, and we can certainly go back, the average has been 1.1 million. We heard from our director last time about some changes and reasons why there were some increases. The proposed is 1.8 million. My recommendation was to cut 79,000 and take it from 1.1 million, 840,000 to 1,760,000. Staff had a chance to review that. And it looks like, I don't know if it's a little over, but we would have to go through and read. And we obviously have directors here to explain that. But the highlighted yellow items, it's easier to say the ones they did not recommend. The building grounds and maintenance are 5,700. Office supplies, operating supplies, athletic leak supplies, those they did not recommend. But it looks like they added in capital infrastructure, 225. And then the batting cage for 10,100. So four, five, they did not recommend and provided their explanations. But they added a little over $10,000 with largely the batting cage and pitching machine to make up 80,651. So I think we would need to go through these and make sure we're okay. I think, starting with the yellow first and, as Councilmember Jackson said, and IM, we could do the same here if we think that's good. City manager, did I capture that section? And finance director? Maybe not perfectly, but.
No, you did well.
The largest one is the PAL program expenses. And that actually was a.
So offered though in this is, you know, the PAL program, which was discussed last meeting. And in conjunction with that was the reindeer run, potentially not doing that moving forward. That's a 15,000 expense and requires, you know, volunteers that were originally affiliated with the PAL program. We can certainly absorb some of that. But there would be, we would have to make a concerted effort as a city to gain support from the community contributions and things of that nature if this run were to continue.
Thank you. I want to take the promotional activities. It's in the middle there. Do we see that one? It's $6,000 in yellow, kind of in the middle of the pack. So this one, we've averaged 3,500. In the past, the first green number, the requested amount is 18,000.
So just as a reminder, Mayor, I think computing that, there's a couple of COVID years in there that really skew that number on promotional activities.
That's helpful. Yes, I do remember that. I want to.
And that applies to other activities that, that that department conducted. 2020, 2021, and 2022 are all affected by COVID.
So. Those are good points. And I, 1152, I just want to get lined up. I've got the same version, Mayor for Tim Kellum, that shows all the columns to point out what our city manager was saying, promotion or.
Same, same with the special events. Same comment there.
Promotional activities, $0 and, you know, 20 or 19, 0, obviously, March of 2020 all the way through 21. There was no expenditures for promotional activities. Things started ramping up a little under 2,000. I guess that'd be in '23, the next year. And then 7,000 in '24. And I think this year, we've spent. 8700, or maybe I could be wrong because I don't have my column headers. And the requested amount is. 18,000. And so. The recommended, you know, 23, well, I'm jumping now, boy. 18,000. I was correct, promotional activities. And then. Last year, though, is the number I'm trying to figure out for promotional activities.
Well, if we just compute the average of those two years.
Yep.
6981 plus 8715. That might be a better figure to go by.
I think so. So. Okay, 7800. Thank you, Councilmember Willis, and is the average. And we've got 15,000 proposed. So that's double the average. The recommendation was to bring it down. Oop, the recommendation was to bring it down. Not at all. I just said, keep it at 18,000. So they're coming in saying, hey, this is one that they can do fewer promotional activities. But I guess my comment here is we've averaged 7800. So I'm not saying necessarily do less. I think we could do 7800. And when I apply that down. I think that's. If we can do 6,000, I think. That's great, but I would not want to reduce if we don't have to, especially if we're disproportionately. This is a good example of why, going back to maybe IM, is most of these budgets increase. While it is reduced from what was proposed, this is one that. Promotion's important. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I have a question. Okay, so as I'm looking at this, we were looking originally at, well, we're talking about promotional activities. And then in our last meeting, we were looking at, let me see. Was it, yeah, special events expenses. And in both cases, they're just saying, we'll just reduce this, right? Which I understand you'd have to if you're looking at trying to reduce. But the special events expenses, we were told that was Friday Fest bands and the crosswalk, right? I don't know if, John Mayberry here, I'm not sure. Hi, John. Okay. Is there anything else in that, John? Besides? Yeah, for special events expenses.
Yes, ma'am. John Mayberry, Deputy Director, Parka. We've got everything that's rolled up in, say, Friday Fest, for example. The band is a big one. The crosswalk, we have porta potties that we provide for people to use out there. Then supplies for the special events, like the trunk retreat and the Holiday in the City event that we incorporated into the Friday Fest in December.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. There's courses, or excuse me, choirs that we have come out. We rent some effects to try to create a sense of Christmas in Florida, which is not an easy task.
Right. Exactly. Okay, then on the promotional activities. Okay, so that's expenses related to Friday Fest, supplies for those special events, the Christmas event, the trunker treat and any of those things. So on promotional activities, and I'm asking this because I was in marketing, so I'm trying to just understand, or I took marketing. So on it, on the promotional, what events are we promoting? And what type of expenses do we have in this category?
Well, things are starting to increase. At C5, we're starting to have more programs come along, basketball, more things for the youth, the summer camp. Saying, off the top of my head, what are some of the promotional? If I'm not putting you on the spot.
The videos that were done, like State of the City, is that?
Come to the front, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
It takes two or three of us to make up for Molly. She's a walking computer.
Well, and that's understandable. I've got a lot going on.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, so there's a lot that comes out of the budget book itself as what, how we keep a log. So Amy does a lot of promoting. And there's also, as you were saying, she, I'm up here. Right, there's a lot, we can pull it up for you if you, if you need, just so you have like a brief overview of all of the expenses. I keep a log. That's my position.
So, so you keep the logs. So you might know some questions here for me, or that, some answers to questions. So I know that when we promote things, we promote them here on our board. We do it on our website. What other ways do we use to promote?
It also takes care of the Adobe programs. It also takes care of our email programs that we use. Surveys, there's, there's a lot that's in depth.
Okay. And see, that's for me is good to know, because otherwise it looks like this big hole.
In our rec desk program as well, which has increased.
Oh, your rec desk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That helps me, thank you. And then, so really, you know, it's, it's got software in there. We've got, you know, the things to support all those things. Is there any paid advertising and magazines or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Explorer, yep. And then there's one every six months.
Okay, can I ever explore too?
Yes.
See, that, that helps me understand and makes it more real for me. So then the other one, for special events, Deputy Director, it jumped from 18 to an estimate of 50,000.
Is that 18, excuse me, ma'am, is that based on the five-year average? Is that the?
Yeah, that was the five-year average.
As the city manager alluded to, Molly gave me some notes before she left. And it's, a lot of that is due directly to the COVID period. We did not, there was no reporting of, or it didn't include expenditures in the 19 and 20 budget. So that was not even accounted for.
So that average is a downtrend.
Right.
Due to not having that activities during that pandemic.
Right. It was like 2023 when we started ramping back up, coming back to a full-time. We're attempting to come back to a full-time status.
Okay, that would definitely skew it.
So those, those numbers from those, like, three years there are not really accurate.
Okay, well, you just let me know. I'll sing at Friday Fest for free.
Okay.
Everyone will run screaming.
We'll cut the check and have it before you see the last note rings out.
With the big Z, right? Okay, thank you. That's what I had.
So I think, yeah, you know, promotional activities, if that includes or gives. We, we average, I think, at $7,000 or $8,000. It was at 18. Instead of taking it to six, you know, if it, if it makes sense to keep that even half, it'd be more than last year, say, 9,000. You know, that'd be the, one of the little changes. And the vehicle replacement, I know I talked about this last time and we talked about the models. I think 40,000, yeah, cars are expensive. But if you go down to that EcoBoost four-cylinder, I mean, it's showing 30,000.
No, we agree. We believe we can get a decent vehicle for 30,000. I would just reiterate to this council, that vehicle is necessary for this department. And we really don't want to see it cut or reduced below 30,000, if we can avoid that. This department's done a pretty good job offering in excess of what was proposed or recommended. I'll be just about $700 more, but they've, they've really taken, you know, the, the mission to cut seriously.
So I think that, on this, thank you, city manager, that's the last line item on this spreadsheet, vehicle or placement total. And 40,000 was the original request, cut half at 20. We're saying third, reduce it by $10,000 instead of. And I think we would need to add that to the total, because that was not one that was, I think, recommended. And. Let's take that one by itself. Are we okay with reducing the vehicle replacement from 40,000 to 30,000? Which would be $10,000. And then I'm just going to jump up at the top, and so we can try to knock out Parka. The first one. 14,000 professional services. I think the requested amount is 23,000. Instead of 23,000, we said 20,000. And I'm seeing 14,000 here. And it says the art projects and the lecture series have been removed. The allotment for the artist residency program has been reduced from 10,000 to 5,000. Artist residency programs are designed to subsidize art programs to increase accessibility to programs for those unable to afford them. They also provide an opportunity for working artists. So is this 14,000 here? Minus the 23,000? Is that what it's saying? So I got a question on this one. Is city staff recommending, or not recommending? So I got a question on this one. Is city staff recommending, or not recommending, but saying, highlighting that that new amount would be fourteen thousand, or no, it would be reduced by fourteen thousand?
Yes, that'd be reduced by fourteen thousand.
So it was twenty-three thousand, five hundred fifty minus fourteen thousand?
She's reducing fourteen thousand dollars out of that line item. That's what she's doing.
Okay.
That's her final number, yep.
Like eleven thousand five. I think we're going to need to get, make, confirm that total. I'm doing it old school up here, but I think, sounds like it's going to need to be, well, if it's fourteen thousand, we understand, council, that new amount isn't showing here, but it would be, yeah, about ten thousand roughly. Nine thousand, ninety-five hundred. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
And I'm so sorry, because this one's for John again. Have we, has anyone used the kiln that we purchased? One time even, other than firing it up to?
Ma'am, to my knowledge, they have, it has not, other than the run-up to make sure everything was working in it. I know they're working on trying to bring our part-time employee, Brandon, over there. Is, he may have started, I know he's planning on taking instruction to be able to operate and have some classes generated there.
How much was that? Do you remember?
I do not, ma'am.
I do not either, but I know that's an expensive item, that's sitting idle, yeah. So do we need a kiln? That's not being used. Yes, I know. And I actually like pottery, but if it's not being used, and that was put on when I first came on.
I'd say it'd be prudent to look at, as their city managers get and settle in and work with the department directors and think about, you know, things maybe with assets, and there's a process for that.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's kind of after-the-fact things that if I support and are sometimes a good idea. So I think that's helpful. That professional services item at twenty, thank you, John, twenty-three thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. If my math is correct, the recommendation is reduce it by fourteen thousand dollars, which means the new item would be nine thousand, five hundred fifty. To council, the budget, factoring COVID, what we learned and how that impacted really this department, arguably greater than any other. Fifty-two hundred. That's what the average was. Instead of the twenty-three thousand, we're saying ninety-five hundred, which is a little less than double, then maybe less than, and thank you for the explanation. But that's still, the first item totals fourteen thousand, if we're going to vote on a total number.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Willis.
If we were to go ahead and add up what staff has recommended, plus dropping that auto purchase by ten thousand. We're looking at ninety thousand, six fifty-one.
Okay, thank you. Ninety thousand, six fifty-one, factoring this.
Add it up every yellow item, plus the ten thousand.
You're not speaking of the total, because we've talked throughout the meeting.
No, just this department.
Okay, yeah, because we are, we're at two hundred thousand right now, taking out the ten thousand, so.
Yes, that math, that's what I see as well. Mayor Portem Kellum?
The original cuts are eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, is that correct? And that's taking out the batting cage?
Well, yeah, I did not recommend removing the batting cage.
Well, I think if we're cutting the professional services, why can't we keep the batting cage?
That's where I was going to go. I'd like to do that.
And then we'd still be around the eighty thousand?
Yep. I think that would be, or, and we received some emails, we've had public comment from Mr. Prevell, appreciate those, those have been submitted. If not, we'll make sure they're in the city clerk and the record. But the improvements on those athletic fields. You know, at a minimum, if we did not even want to do the batting cage, that those funds could be used for at least improving the field to get it to that standard. I'm saying it's not as much about the batting cage as it is investing in the ball fields. I think batting cage is a great idea, but Mayor Portem?
Well, is there consensus on that, batting cage?
Basically, that would take, we're just, council, do we have consensus that another way to say it is we're reducing the vehicle from forty thousand to ten? I think we all agreed on that. Mayor Portem Kellum says, instead of reducing it to get the number, Councilmember Willis said, we're going to basically keep it at eighty thousand, six fifty-one, because we want to do the batting cage. Okay.
Hey, I thought the batting cage was in there.
It is. It is, so you're really taking it down even ten thousand more, because you were at eighty. You did the ten thousand for the car, you're at seventy, and then you just said you want, we already have the ten coming out for the batting cage. Now you want to put it back in, so now you're at sixty.
No, I think those numbers go to, yep.
Yeah, you're just switching the two. You're reducing the car by ten thousand, and you're keeping the batting cage for just over ten, so it's almost a wash.
Reducing your number by a hundred dollars, the eighty thousand.
Correct.
Net a hundred dollars less.
Yeah, if we wanted to make the math, that's what I have.
You're putting ten back in, and you're, for the car.
I mean, we could reduce ten thousand, one hundred for the vehicle, is another way, but that's.
So we're budgeting thirty thousand for the vehicle.
Right.
Right.
Not.
So you're not taking out twenty thousand, you're taking out ten thousand.
Yes.
So that, you were at seventy-nine thousand, so now you're only going to take out ten thousand. So that.
No, that, John.
Pulls you back up to eighty-nine thousand, and you took the ten out for the batting cage to get you back to eighty? Is that how you're looking at it?
Yeah, the total amount is the yellow, eighty thousand, six fifty-one. We're reducing it. That includes the pitching machine. Councilmember Willis?
Right, well, if we're putting the batting cage back into the budget, the total PRCA cuts.
Yes.
Are eighty thousand, five fifty-one.
Right.
Correct.
No.
No, seventy thousand, five fifty-one.
Minus the ten for the car.
But then you put the car back in, and you bring it back to the number you just said, yes. Eighty thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars.
All right, we're good. It's back and forth and in and out, and same, same.
Keep the batting cage, take ten thousand off the vehicle. We've got a number of eighty thousand, five hundred fifty-one.
Then you reduced the professional services too, right?
That's already equated in there.
That fourteen thousand, I just wanted to point out what the budget would be, how much they would have. Yeah, the nine fifty-four, four forty-two, I think the printing, it looks like is the only one that seemed very high, but again, I know how COVID would impact that. But that's five thousand dollars reduced. Those reductions. And then the summer rec program, I guess the Powell and Summer Rec, the last two, or any of those really that we have not discussed. Are there any issues or concerns there? Councilmember Willis, just for the number that you have again, is it eighty thousand, five hundred fifty-one?
Yes, if we're leaving promotional activities at six thousand, that's what it would be.
City manager, and is that?
Yeah, that's the math. I would just ask John, because you went way low on the promotional activities, well beyond what was being suggested. If you're good with that number, then council's going to accept it, but. Okay, then we're good.
I would most definitely like to see the reindeer run stay in.
Yes, that stays in. Yeah, it doesn't look like we're removing that, and that was just an item for discussion.
These cuts will not impact, or will not take away reindeer run funding?
Right.
But it's not on. Where's it at?
For that, not having it this year, just taking the one year off to rebrand. Normally, Ms. Benny was responsible for going out and getting the sponsorships, the donations and all that. And the city handled the logistics of everything, traffic control, getting the facility set up. But, you know, she decided that she was going to retire, and she always started that portion, the financial end of it, back in June or early July, so we've lost months. It would not be to the standard that it had been if we did it this year. That's our opinion. And we'd like a year and then come back.
But I do stand corrected. It is slated to be removed.
Yes, totally removed.
Because the total, the total twenty-eight oh three oh is equal to the proposed, and that's what's being recommended for cut. So the reindeer run would have to put fifteen thousand back in there, so twenty-eight thousand, zero three zero, minus fifteen thousand.
Assuming that is all reindeer run expenditures, all the twenty-eight thousand.
Well, fifteen would be.
PRCA, would you give me what the cost would have been to do the reindeer run?
Just to physically, logistically put it on?
Yes, sir.
We can do that.
I agree. I'd like to, whatever that cost is, keep, if it's the fifteen or, I don't.
Well, fifteen is being earmarked, so again, it's being offered as a cut within the twenty-eight thousand thirty.
I can certainly understand the logistical issues you're going to have now.
T-shirts, medals, those type things that are included in it.
You've got, you've got basically two months to pull that off.
And in that time, we're also putting on Monster Mash. Getting prepared for Holiday in the City. It's our busiest time of the year.
Well, I know there's going to be groups that are going to be very disappointed that it's not running this year. But that will also emphasize the fact, get involved with it.
Right. This is an important issue to discuss, for sure. They have very limited time, given what they're doing. To do, to put it on if the council wants it, then they're going to have to really work hard to make it happen in the council. We've asked earlier, well, in individual meetings, about assisting with, you know, raising sponsorship and so forth. So taking a year off is a viable suggestion.
If there's, like Councilmember Willis says, obviously, there are going to be people, the runners, that are going to be, percentage of them are going to be disappointed, but if we go out now, it's not going to be the quality that it has been. We're just, we're starting too late. We won't be at the same level. And they're going to be more disappointed, to my mind, when they show up expecting it to be what it's been every year. And it most likely will not be, if we try to do it now.
But those funds for this year were already passed last year.
No.
We're talking about the twenty twenty-six here, moving forward.
This would be twenty twenty-six, because it's October first.
Next year's budget to be done in twenty. But it'll be.
Yep. It's the same as the election in November that we cut, because we don't need it in November. We're saying, he's recommending not doing this in December, this December.
And I'm going to throw my two cents worth in here, because it's not just the runners that'll be disappointed. This is a huge event for our city, bigger than trunk or treat and that type of thing. It's one of the biggest things for our city, and we've always had it. And I personally, ugh, I'm like, oh, no, I'm going to have this huge budget for parks and rec, and we can't pull off reindeer run, although I understand what you're saying, okay? So my question, Deputy Director, is Ms. Betty, when she was doing the coordinating, and you said she got donations, and what other things were she, was she doing? Because I know it would put a hardship on staff, but I'm wondering if we could.
She handled, she handled dealing with the local businesses and personal relationships. She had people that donated. She coordinated with the, I believe it's the running company that's.
Running Zone?
Yeah, Running Zone, that comes out with the clock and everything. But, yes, she has the board set up. She gets, she deals with Universal, just all kinds of people, and gets tickets. And we have, there's a raffle at the end of the race. You know, and we're just, we won't be able to do the quality. It won't be the same quality as what it's been. As far as the physical act of going out there and setting up cones, blocking, doing the traffic control, coordinating with the fire department for Santa Claus, all that stuff we can do for sure. But you're talking about t-shirts and these things, people, that's the things that are important to people, the t-shirts, the medals, those type things, and, you know, we're coming in here now two months to start. We didn't know that she was going to retire. This was not something that had been announced and planned months, you know, ahead of time, where we could have started preparing.
I understand, and I understand that it would be difficult for you guys by yourself. I'm trying to think of creative ways that we could pull this off as a team, almost.
What about the Running Zone? What about a private company taking, you know, a promoter?
And see, that's a possibility too.
So I think we all see the struggle that, the reality of when the race is, the big production, the fact that Mary Jane handled so much of that, and our city staff stayed busy in other ways with it to add that on. I get that. I do like the idea of maybe if we don't have too much burden on staff, thinking outside the box, or it would be better to do it less without, I mean, just, we can only do what we can do and have a watered-down version to not do it at all. Yeah, and it isn't just the runners. We do this goofy Ridgewood reindeer. We stand on the sides and we started getting people on Ridgewood to come out. And one year I passed our city attorney on this race. The picture camera came up and I decided I was going to run fast, and I'm going right by him, but then he, he ended up getting me, but no. The, I don't know if we're going to figure it out tonight, but I think we are definitely going to try and do something, even if it looks a little different, if we can. Amy, did you, I saw you come up, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that I was involved. I've been involved in Powell since it was instituted. Under the sheriff's office, I started out on the Powell board when we created one for Cannavale. So I've been involved with that organization and the run for quite some time. Mary Jane had talked about retiring, but I thought she would at least get through, should be able to get through, but she has some medical issues, and so I understand. The problem is just, not just logistics, but this is our busy season. The medals are going to come from China. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get them in time for a run. She did a lot of talking to companies to provide us with funds, things like water, bananas, little things that people don't talk about, trash cans. It's a big event. And in order for us to do it really well, because if we do it bad, nobody's going to come next year. It would be great if we had the year to regroup, to figure out who she talked to and identify those places that we can go and maybe reach out to community partners to help us get this done in order to put on a great event.
When did Mary Jane let you know she was retiring?
It was, as Amy said, it was something that she would throw out occasionally, but then she changed her mind.
But I mean, when did she say, guess what, guys, I'm not doing this?
It was end of August.
Yeah.
But it's pretty much, we had about three, maybe four weeks of.
I met with her about a week or so ago, about it. We'd already been in budget talks. You know, Mayor, you mentioned we may not be able to decide tonight or you pass, you know. Tonight's the night for the budget. We're getting, this meeting has to end at five-thirty, and if you haven't, if you still need more time in the form of a workshop, then it may have to continue during the council meeting during. meeting during public comment phase. And I just, you know, wanted to throw that out there. Uh, but also suggest that, I mean, staff is, staff's been on this for years. I would defer to their expertise on the logistics behind this run. I understand the importance of it, and I'm not going to say it's not important. Um, you know, if the council wants to see it continue despite what, you know, the staff is saying could potentially happen, then, then a budget decision would be necessary tonight. Um, I'm, I'm, you're saying 15,000? Is that the figure to put the run on? And, and so if that's the council's desire, then we'd have to amend the 28,030 by cutting 1330, 13030 and leaving the 15,000 in.
Okay.
That, that can potentially be done as a contingency for now, with the understanding that we can revisit this issue on whether or not we're going to do the run. Um, because you know, there's two things to decide, really, the, the budget tonight and if we're going to do this run, um, tonight. And they've, you know, staff has given the council, I think, a lot to think about.
So that number that you shared, thank you, City Manager, was 13,000. What would the remaining, oh, will we just leave 15,000 out of it?
Leave 15, yeah, leave 15 in and cut 13030. John, check my math. I think that's right.
We got the 80,551, which included 28,000.
Yeah.
Right? So can we figure that math?
Sure.
And.
You know, we're, we're presenting a lean budget. This department has already cut lower than, or more than what was suggested.
65.
If council doesn't, doesn't have an issue with 15,000 in there as a placeholder for a run, that may or may not happen with a decision sometime after tonight. At least you have the revenue in there and you're not, you know, you're not having to make that decision right now to cut or keep.
And that was my thing, was if we're on the fence, let's keep it. And, uh, the cost is.
They'll take us down to 65,551 then.
And what was the total amount? Is it 13,030?
Yes.
Yeah, we were.
Okay, so 80,551 minus the 30,030? Is that right?
No, no, 80,000 minus the 15,000 that we want to keep in. Well, to keep us at 65,551. Yeah.
No, the, the way I understand, the budget was 28,000.
That's what was getting cut, but now we're keeping 15 in for that event.
No, it was proposed 28,000.
Well, that's for that whole line, PAL expense.
Right. And so we reduced that by 13,030?
No, by 15.
No, we leave 15,000 in it?
Yes.
We're leaving 15 in it, but in essence, we're only cutting 13,000.
Right.
Right. So 80,551 minus 13,030.
Yeah.
Gives us the six, I have 67,521? Is that close?
We were at 80, we were at 80,551.
Yep, that's what I did, minus the 13,030.
No, we're, we're putting 15,000 back into the budget. So you have to subtract 15,000.
Right. You gotta give 15,000 back. Instead of 28, you're giving 15. So you're at 65,551. The way you're doing it, you're actually.
Well, these columns were used differently. The other department did, I think, the, the way that, and I knew this might have been confusing. Okay. If, if we're. It, it's not as important, I think. Well, okay. I don't think I fully understand, but, um.
So if it's helpful, instead of looking at 28,000, 030, then you look, the number would be 13,000, 030, correct? That's the amount that would be cut. Because the yellow, the, the numbers in yellow represent the proposed cut?
No, I see.
Yeah. So, so instead of 28,030, the proposed cut is 13,030?
My, now I look at it and I feel, I feel silly because I, it just got to that point in the meeting. I agree. I think we can keep that, counsel. Do we have any issue with, uh, reducing the, down to the number by keeping PAL in, in that number one more time, final?
The cut would be 13,000, 030.
13,000, 030, the total is?
And John, the total's 65,551 from the department.
Okay. So six, go ahead.
And so what council has done to this point, uh, has agreed to cut 195,481.
Okay.
That's where we're at right now, based on what council has talked about throughout the whole meeting.
Counsel, uh, we've kind of taken each department total. We've come to this total now of, Parca originally was 80,651. We got there how we got there, but our new number is actually not cut as much out of that department. And are we all in agreement and opposed to the 65,551 as discussed? That keeps reindeer run, hopefully. Well, it keeps the possibility of reindeer run. And I'm thinking, if it can't be, if it, if we can't find outside, it may not be a good idea. So, but no matter what, it's going to impact, I think, the city staff at some level. And if there's a solution, great. Okay. I think I got consensus, City Manager, on that portion to equate the total our finance director just provided.
Yep.
So the last, uh.
I think that was.
The last one was, was there any other, the difference that, well, there's a.
Non-departmental should be the last left, I think, for your consideration.
Is that 16,000?
Cuts is 16,529.
Okay. That's professional services codification going from 3,500 down to?
So pointing everyone to, um, the 6,500 under non-departmental promotional activities, that is in reference to the Volunteer Board Appreciation Dinner. Um, and we had discussed that outside of this meeting, one-on-one. Um, that's a topic for your discussion, I believe.
Uh, the non, the promotional activities?
Correct. About halfway down, the 6,500.
So that total proposed was 40,475? We asked if 30,225 would work, which would be a 20, yeah, $10,000 reduction. What's the 6,500 represent?
The 6,500 is the.
Reduction from the 40,000?
Your volunteer appreciation.
But the, are we saying, uh, the original proposed, right now, the budget as it stands is at 40,475 for promotional activities? What is the number, the new budget number? That, do we subtract 6,500 from the 40,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So counsel, do we, and which would leave a budget of roughly 34, 33,5? So we're taking the budget from 40,000 to that line item? There's still 33,000?
The new proposed amount of 30,225?
Well, that was my confusion. No, that was the number that I originally wrote. Basically, the 40,475 was what was originally proposed. And we asked, could we make 30,000 work? And that's why I questioned, it should show $10,000 reduction.
Yeah.
And does this, but I think our city manager confirmed that's, they're saying we'll, we can reduce the 40,000 by 6,500. So that new number, 40,475 minus 6,500, if that's, in fact, would be 30.
33,975.
Yep. Thank you. 33,975?
For that line item.
Yes, which is double the average. But again, COVID, I think, especially on this too.
Yes.
On that one, that's the, the larger, or one of the larger ones. Counsel? Mayor Protem?
Last year, we did 25,592.
You have that sheet. Is that what it shows?
Yes.
Promotional activities and non-departmental, uh.
So the average between 2020 and 2024 is 16,948. And they proposed 40,475?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we go to the 30,225?
So Mayor Protem, just to clarify, if we're, if we're looking at those first three years, those were COVID years. Um, and if we're taking the average of the last two years, then you're looking at, uh, 23,650 as opposed to the five-year average of 16,948. Um, and that's, that's a, a similar approach to those other COVID-related, um, items. So perhaps a more accurate average would be the 23,650. And the proposed was 40, the suggested was 30. And the city staff is proposing, is countering that with 33,975, which is just about 4,000 more than the proposed amount at the last council meeting.
Yeah. And those notes in there, the 6,500 appreciation dinner, the 2,000 floral arrangements, the 3,500 employee gift cards, that totaled. Yeah, 12,000. And I said, just in my math, you know, you don't got to eliminate floral arrangements, but it was, I saw there were some increases in there.
Right. That just made up the diff, that's where the 10,000 came from. It just made up the difference. So when staff looked at it and said, well, what can we cut of that 10,000, the 6,500 is what staff landed on for the, um, volunteer. There was no intention to cut floral arrangements or whatever, because.
No.
I mean, people continue to, you know, die.
I'm still looking at it. I'm like, okay, if we're cutting these things, which are pretty big things, what are we spending the 33,975,000 on? Just like when, when we were talking about the other one with PRCA. When you're taking out the thing like the appreciation dinner and those, these, what is it covering now?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think the workbooks, you know, showed.
I'll have to look, yeah.
Showed, the works books we gave you a few weeks ago showed that. And so when we were tasked with this, we're going in and, and the only thing we saw there, based on the whole list of things that happened under promotional, was the 6,500s. And that, and that, that is the decision of council. If council wants to keep the 6,500, we keep the 6,500 and we press forward with the, uh, appreciation dinner. But that was just, these are things we identified. And so if council decides otherwise, just tell us and then we won't, um, affect that line item.
I'm fine for the sake of this meeting. And we're not going to, I think, the only thing we're doing is really just getting general consensus. But we can, we're, we're going to actually vote on this in the public hearing in respect, you know, the time in between this and the CRA meeting. We're at 5:22. I think the questions are around, can we do more right now and understanding what these reductions are? And we have a total of 6,500. It was being questioned why we can't do 10 and understanding how those funds, I actually have that tab, that workbook. Um, but we are short, I think, on time. I guess I would be in support of these reductions. Um, and that, that volunteer appreciation dinner is also something that would, you know, reindeer run. We have other things that we're doing sometimes that happen. So I think, do we have any opposition to reducing the 16,529? Okay. And, uh, the biggest one in there is the R and R replenishment, if any, I mean, that in itself, um, for, for a future topic. But I think if we can get agreement on that, that'll be the last one. And I think before we can get a total going into this hearing.
So there's a, there's a consensus then to go with the proposed recommended cut of 16,529?
I'm seeking that now. Yeah. Any opposed? Do we have consensus?
So John, what, what does that bring the total cuts to for the council?
Okay. Hang on a second. So we're going to, now we're, we were at 195,481 and 16,529?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll do it the old-fashioned way, by hand? 11. So it'll be 211, 010.
$211?
211,000, 010.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. And my question, based on my, when I'm, I'm tasked with here, is the things we just identified is what, when we move into the other meeting, there may be other things you want to talk about. But this, are we locking in this 211, 010? So every, we, we have, Cheryl's annotated everything you've talked about. So when we go to update the budget the rest of this week, you know, get the new book free or whatever, that's what we're going to adjust exactly what you told us. So is the 211, 010 unchangeable from now until we get into the, the council meeting? Or is that gonna, is that number going to change because we're going to change our minds or what?
I'm firm on, I don't think.
The mayor's firm on this? Is the rest of the council?
That's exactly what we just did, was said that we can say, these are the specific ones. And yes, 211,000, $10.
211,000, $10.
$10.
Okay. City Manager is, go ahead.
We could, we could say, if we were to apply that, the millage rate would drop to 3.1434.
From the proposed what?
From the, um.
That's combined?
From the millage of the 3.2474.
So we're going from 3.2474 to 3.1434?
That's where we're at right now.
The 3.2474 was the rollback rate, right?
That's correct. So now we're going down to 3.1434. 3.1434. Yep.
Okay. And that is, we, we're going to take this up in the hearing. It would be good to know the percentage decrease from the rollback rate?
Um.
And that, not urgent, but if you.
Yeah, you can just divide 3.3.
And.
Uh, did it come across? Oh, it came across. It's, that would be another 3.31%.
Joey would have had it already.
Go with 3.3%.
Joey would have had it already.
Actually, this is Joey's sheet. I'm looking at, it popped right up.
Oh, come on.
I was very schooled before he left. He schooled me before.
You guys are doing great.
So roughly 3.3% reduction below the rollback.
And we're calling Peru to make sure Joey's going to confirm that.
Which is very similar to last year.
Yeah, yeah. So 3.3, yeah.
Counsel, that is the workshop. I think we identified, you know, the areas that, that staff pointed out. We actually didn't agree with, I think, two of them. And not agree, it's just, the risk has been explained and we know our numbers now to head into this meeting. If there's not anything else, unfortunately, if the community, uh, can stick around during our public comment, if you did intend to speak, we will make sure that you're heard. So, counsel, if we can go ahead and adjourn, we have to shift gears to a CRA board meeting? Let's go ahead. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.